Mr. Amador.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to excuse Mr. McAldoney from this evening's meeting. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Now, I would like to ask everybody to rise for a moment of silence, followed by the pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, if the staff would go around and hand the microphone to the residents, allow them to introduce themselves. Please.
Zach Roth, Parks and Recreation.
Derek Tripp, Parks and Recreation.
Jenny Lovridge, Advisory.
Donna Cole, Advisory Committee.
Carol Harvell, Advisory Committee.
George Maxey, Advisory Committee.
Karen O'Donnell, Parks Recreation and Golf.
Sandy Carruthers.
Carolyn Keith, Parks and Recreation.
Lowell Richardson, Police Department.
Cheryl Kirstens, Finance.
Jacqueline Trumper, Finance.
Armando Arriola, Finance.
David Rush.
Lucy Rush.
All right, thank you all for being here this evening. First item on the agenda, we're going to go into citizen communication. Per city council policy, citizen communication is the time on our agenda for the public to address the council on businesses and affairs of the city. As we approach the election season, council would like to remind candidates for elected office that political activity in city buildings is prohibited per Resolution 2008-60. This includes campaigning from the podium. The city council is not able to hear any comments on land use matters that are before or may come before council. Please reserve such comments for the appropriate public hearing. Please give your name and address for the record, and keep your comments limited to three minutes. Thank you. Now, I do have the list, and I have one gentleman on here that would like to speak. Please come forward to the podium and state your name and address for the record. Mr. David Rush. Good evening.
Hello. I have a problem with, just behind my backyard, there's a fence on my side and a fence on the other side, and there's an alley that's like no man's land. And recently, I sent a, Sunday, an email to have someone come out and look at it because I had two, two or three holes in the ground, and I thought it was some kind of an animal. Kids cut through there all the time, and I was kind of concerned about that. And the letter I got back was, "Your request has been resolved with the resolution. Went to the area, left a card for the RP." I don't know what that means. It does look like something was there at one point, but I did not see any current holes. We'll talk to the RP when they call back. Please do not hesitate to call us again for any further questions." That was in September. Since then, there's been, I don't know, I may be underestimating, but there must be 100 holes in this alleyway. This is the alleyway, and I'll give this to you in a minute.
Sure.
And these are, these are just some of the gopher holes that are in there now, so, and they go all the way through this alley. Now, they're coming in on my side of the fence into my wife's rose garden. So, any of you that are gardeners, you can understand, I have two holes back there with maybe more to come, I don't know.
And you're more than welcome to hand that to the city attorney, and he can bring it up so we can see it?
Sure.
And are they, is this gophers or prairie dogs?
I had a, I had a guy from a pest control company come out.
Okay.
And he said that they're pocket gophers.
Okay. This strip in between the fences, who's responsible for maintenance?
Good question. Neither River Run nor Stillwater.
I'm trying to figure out exactly where it is. I live in River Run. My property backs up to 112th Avenue.
Oh, okay. I'm on the corner of 118th and Oakland.
Okay. So, this is kind of in between Stillwater and Oakland?
Yes.
But someone, that property has to belong to somebody, and if it belongs to the city, then the city has to maintain it. If it belongs to the HOA, then the HOA has to maintain it, or if it's a private residence. So, that to me is my number one concern, is who owns the property and who needs to maintain it because the weeds are in clear violation that are down the alleyway?
Initially, when I had a weed problem, I sent that photograph that you're looking at on top to councilperson Carson, and within a matter of weeks, those weeds were cut down. Because if you look at them, they're just as tall as my fence.
Yeah, they are.
But now, the bigger problem are the gophers.
Are the gophers, well, and I have a lot of staff here to help me if I misspeak, but I will tell you, when it comes to wild animals, prairie dogs, gophers, I even had a gentleman do a petition to eradicate all the squirrels in the city limits. Those are not under the jurisdiction of the city. Animals, wild animals, are under the jurisdiction of the State Wildlife Department. So, we have no authority to do anything with those animals. Raccoons, we get a lot of raccoon complaints and skunk complaints. Those end up being a private person's, private residence issue to deal with. You can hire an exterminator, you can hire a company that takes care of those type of animals, but when it comes to the city's jurisdiction, we have no authority over wild animals within the city limits. That's all falls underneath of the State Division of Wildlife.
Well, if, if I have to have all of those eradicated, it's going to cost me quite a bit of money.
Sure.
And that's not my property.
Well, and here's the other thing. If I had raccoons on my property, and the property next door was a, was a property that was conducive to harboring or having raccoons on the property, then I could have a civil claim against the property owner next door because they're having an impact on my property. But I have, the city can't go in. Now, we have in situations with skunks, been able to go to the neighboring property and get them to clean things up so that it didn't attract skunks anymore. But we are very limited, and I would, I would ask for the city attorney to speak on or back up what I've, what I've said. We can deal with making sure it meets code, mowing the weeds, making sure whoever owns the property maintains the property. But when it comes to prairie dogs, or gophers, or raccoons, we can't make the prop, those animals are there on their own will, and we can't make, make them, deal with them. Now, if it becomes a public nuisance, then maybe we'll be able to do something. But I'll turn it over to the city attorney.
You're correct, Mayor Ford. I believe the city could determine whether the property is owned by the city, or whether it was to be maintained by an HOA or a district, or if it's actually private property that just happens to have fences on either side of it. The actual dividing boundary line between the properties could be determined potentially through the subdivision plat, unless we have to go back and look at property records. So, I believe we can, we can take a look at that and see if it's city property.
Right. And I am curious, if JD got the complaint and turned it in, and they came out and mowed the weeds, who actually mowed the weeds? And we don't have that information before us today. But we will make sure that the city manager and the city attorney have the copies of the photographs that you brought in. We'll make sure that it gets looked into, and I would like you to give your contact information to the city attorney, and we'll make sure that you have direct follow-up from the city manager's office. So that we can, so that you all know who owns the property. If it is the city's property, I want to make sure that that's cleaned up and maintained. And if those animals are on our property, we need to deal with that so they don't become a nuisance to other property owners. But if it's someone else's property, and it's private property, then the city attorney can advise us as to what your, your resources are. But when it comes to wild animals, we are very limited what we can do. The weeds and maintenance of that property, we can, we can definitely do something about.
Okay.
And I appreciate you coming in tonight, and I will tell you, if you go, we have our website, c3gov.com. You can go on there and take pictures, send pictures in. You can report issues within your community, and then you'll get direct follow-up as well. But you're more than welcome to come to council meeting anytime you want, or call one of us, and we'll do our best to make sure you're directed to the right people.
Okay. I have one small other item.
Uh-huh, sure.
This is the corner of Peoria and 120th.
Okay.
And I tried to show the depth of this.
Right.
Using my foot, but it's about eight inches, and there's three of those holes right there.
We can make sure that we can ask the City of Brighton to maintain that. The 120th from Highway 85 to Sable is City of Brighton.
Oh, okay.
Okay? But we can, we can go ahead and pass that, that issue along, and see if they can get out there to fill in that shoulder. I know exactly where you're talking about, right across from 711 there.
Yep.
Yep, all right.
Okay.
Thanks again.
Thank you.
Councilman Carson, do you have something you wanted to say?
I do. David, thanks for coming in, and I did just see that, and it honestly looks to me like the asphalt will cave in here pretty quick, because it looked like the dirt was totally gone. But to the gopher, groundhog, prairie dog, rabbits, I mean, I'm all for, I'm an animal lover, and I think we should, but these are rodents, and our neighborhoods are starting to be infested. Is there anything that we can do? I know I was over here the middle of last week over on 80th, and heard this noise, and I'm like, what are they doing over there? Well, I guess it's a large vacuum, that they come and they vacuum up prairie dogs, and then move them. I don't know where they were moving them to.
They do that. That's exactly how they do. It's a humane relocation, is what they call it. We know they vacuum them up, we don't know what they do with them afterwards.
Well, the farmers out east get tired of them being dumped on the road sides in the middle of the night.
Well, I was going to say, these are issues that it doesn't seem like anybody wants. So, we're all, our hands are tied, that, I mean, where I'm at, the rabbits have, they just eat the grass down below, the dirt, there's no root system left. If you come down Peoria, heading towards 104th, I mean, the prairie dogs are ridiculous. When you get down here on Quebec, the prairie dogs are ridiculous. And if these are gophers, I know years ago at this, we had a little lake house, and we had spent weeks up there putting in sod and landscaping, and we went out boating and came back three hours later, and there was nothing left. So, these rodents do some pretty severe damage to all of us, and I don't, there really is nothing, Robert, we can do?
No, nothing. It's a, it's a state wildlife issue, and if it's on your property, I can give you some names of qualified rodent remediation, or raccoon problems, whatever. They will come to your house, and you can pay them to relocate or get rid of the problem.
But that's the problem, because it's citywide, so if I do it, then in a couple months, they just come back because the neighbor didn't do it. Is there some type of landscaping or plants that people can put in that deter these animals from coming?
Sure. A lot of people putting little fences around their stuff, too. It's tough. I had one company that just did their landscaping that they were required to do by the city, a business at 69th Avenue on Highway 85, and this was a couple of years ago. They put in all brand-new landscaping per our requirements, and it didn't last a week. The prairie dogs came in and destroyed everything to the ground. But at the end of the day, the answer is that the city of Commerce City, nor any of the other metropolitan cities, have any jurisdiction over wildlife. That is not anything that falls under us, and if you were to go to the Division of Wildlife, they would tell you, you can go down to the mercantile and buy a trap, and trap them, animals off your property, or you can hire an exterminator. But we do not have any governance over wild animals, period.
So, we brought in the black-footed ferret.
We didn't. The state, the feds, the feds did.
It's, I don't know, I'll quit, but it just seems crazy to me that we have to set back and let rodents come into our city and start destroying things, so...
Mr. Bullock had an issue in the city with one of our residents, a senior, that was having skunks and raccoons. And we got her the name of a qualified person, and they've been dealing with the skunks and raccoons. Not to say they won't come back, but we have no jurisdiction to govern wildlife within the City of Commerce City.
And it cost her over $1,000 for the first eradication of skunks, and she still sees them starting to come back. So, she has actually built up a wall so they can't come under her house again.
Yep, it is, the way it is. I, I, we just don't have, no municipality has jurisdiction over the wildlife within the city. It's a state, a state issue. So, thanks again, folks, for coming in.
Thank you.
All right, moving on in our agenda. Next item's the consent agenda. The consent agenda includes items that are routine, procedural, informational, self-explanatory, and non-controversial. They are presented to council for a single, single motion and vote. Any member of council may ask to remove a specific item for further discussion and a separate vote. Tonight, there are five items listed under the consent agenda. Do any of the council members wish to remove an item off of the consent agenda for further discussion? Steve? Tell me what number.
Resolution 2016-129, and Resolution 2016-128.
128 and 1, 129, right?
Yes.
All right, they're both resolutions, all right. That leaves three. Now, let's see, Mr. Bullock, did you have anything?
No, I was there for the motion.
All right. So, now, we're down to three. Need a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Mr. Bullock.
Move to approve the revised consent agenda.
Thank you. Mr. Amador?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the revised consent agenda. Will the city attorney please read the titles of that revised consent agenda?
Thank you, Mayor Ford. Ordinance 2111, An Ordinance Authorizing the Leasing of Certain City Property and the Execution and Delivery by the City of a Site Lease, a Lease Purchase Agreement, an ESPRO Agreement, and Other Financing Documents in Connection Therewith, Setting Fourth Parameters and Restrictions With Respect to the Financing, Authorizing the Refunding of Certain Certificates of Participation, Ratifying Action Previously Taken Concerning the Referenced Transactions, and Providing Other Matters Relating There Too. Resolution 2016-125, Resolution Approving Intergovernmental Agreement Concerning the Adams County Community Transit Program. Resolution 2016-126, Resolution Finding Substantial Compliance of an Annexation Petition and Setting a Public Hearing to Determine if the Proposed Annexation Complies with Statutory Requirements for Such Annexation, AN 244-16.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second. The titles have been read. I'm open for a vote. Now's the time.
Roll call.
Roll call. Thanks, Rick. I was trying to figure out what kind of vote was that happening? It's a roll call. All right. Consent agenda has been approved. Eight in favor, one excused absence. All right, now, we're going to go on to the polled consent agenda items. Let's start with Resolution 2016-129. A Resolution Approving Intergovernmental Agreement with South Adams County Water and Sanitation District Regarding Second Creek Infrastructure Improvements. Mr. Douglas.
Yes. Sorry about that. On this resolution, this is tied in with Resolution 2016-128, correct? And, yeah. So, the district is going to, is paying the portion for this change order? It's coming from the water district?
Yes, so the $908,000 that's specified is what the district will pay for their mainline irrigation, and then the delta, the $26,743, will come out of the project contingency, because that's part of what we have to pay for our right-of-way agreements and step-outs.
All right. Just want some clarification on that. I mean, that's what it looked like, but I just want to make sure.
And the district will be taking a vote at their meeting this week, which is why it's on our agenda tonight.
Okay. All right, thank you very much.
All right. You want to take care of the other one before we vote on them?
So, the one, since they're tied together and based on...
128. Did you have any other concerns above and beyond what you listed for...
No, no, 128 ties with 129, yeah.
Right, they both tie together. That's why I wanted to do them before I voted on either one. So, you're good with both of them, Steve?
Yes, thank you for that clarification.
Council have any other questions concerning Resolution 2016-128 or 129? Seeing none, I'm open for a motion to do them individually. Mr. Bullock.
Move to approve Resolution 2016-129.
Thank you. Mr. Douglas?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve Resolution 2016-129. All those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Title?
Yes.
Title.
Thank you. Resolution 2016-129, Resolution Approving Intergovernmental Agreement with the South Adams County Water and Sanitation District Regarding Second Creek Infrastructure Improvements.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Mr. Bullock, how about 128?
Motion to approve Resolution 2016-128.
Thank you. Mr. Douglas? I have a motion and a second to approve Resolution 2016-128. Will the city attorney please read that title?
Thank you. Resolution 2016-128, Resolution Approving Change Order Number Two to Contract for New Recreation Center and Infrastructure Construction Services.
Thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. That gets us through the consent agenda this evening. Now, we'll move into public hearings. We have Resolution 2016-39. I'm going to reopen the public hearing and ask if there's anyone in the audience who would like to come forward and address the council on this item. Saying none. I'm going to close the public hearing. I'm going to ask for a motion and a second to approve Resolution 2016-39. Mr. Bullock?
Move to approve Resolution 2016-39.
Thank you. Mr. Amador?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion from the city council this evening? I would like to say, before, before we vote, that I like the way that we did the budget process this year. I like the engagement from all of the directors, from all the different departments engaging in that budget. I think staff did a great job of putting it all together and being able to lay it out in layman's terms for all of our residents and our city council. And with that, I am in favor of approving the budget this year. Mr. Amador, do you have something to say?
Yeah, I just want to commend staff on this phenomenal book, and I'm being serious about this. When I started in 2013, the budget book was, I'm going to call it, for lack of a better term, very dry and hard to follow, because there were not tabs in it. Maybe it was all in black and white, I'm not exactly sure. But this budget booklet in front of us, along with majority of the improvements that were made to it, is very easy to follow. So, I just want to commend staff on that, and it looks really good, so I'm in favor of it as well.
Thank you. Mr. Douglas?
Yes. I'd like to thank the, thank the financial department on this. Start with Roger, and passed on Cheryl and her team, and I really appreciate the focus that was brought to this department. I had the privilege of talking to Armando. We're back in Washington for our advocacy trip, and just going on a lot of different things, and I really do appreciate the depth that this goes into, and the clarification of how things are sectioned out, and where it's, anybody, you know, our citizens could look at this and understand it, and I really appreciate that. And like I say, I started with Roger, he passed that on. I think our city has great leadership when it comes to the financial department, so I just want to commend you guys for that. Thank you.
All right. Seeing no other discussion, I have a motion and a second. Title, please.
Resolution 2016-39, Resolution Adopting the 2017 Budget and Certification of the Mill Levy for the City of Commerce City.
Thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Then, we'll move into ordinances on first reading. We have Ordinance 2117. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to address the city council on this ordinance? Thought you were all getting up to come up here and discuss the ordinance. Seeing none, I'm open for a motion to introduce Ordinance 2117 by city council, seated. Mr. Douglas?
So, move.
Mr. Bullock?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Will the city attorney please read the title?
Ordinance 2117, An Ordinance Amending the 2016 Budget of the City of Commerce City, Colorado by the recognition of the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, Community Development Block Grant Funds in the amount of $386,340 for sidewalk construction and bus stop improvements and the authorization of the expenditure thereof.
Thank you. I'll ask for a roll call vote. For the record, Ordinance 2117 is introduced unanimously this evening with one caveat of excused absence for Mr. McAldoney. And then, we'll move into Ordinance 2118. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to address the council on this ordinance? Seeing no one? I'm open for a motion. Mr. Bullock?
Move to introduce Ordinance 2118. Council is seated.
Thank you. Mr. Diaz?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to introduce Ordinance 2118 by council, as seated. Will the city attorney please read that title?
Ordinance 2118, An Ordinance Amending the 2016 Budget of the City of Commerce City, Colorado by the recognition of the Bulletproof Vest Partnership Grant Funds in the amount of $6,400 for the Bulletproof Vest program in the police department and the authorization of the expenditure thereof.
Thank you. I'll ask for a roll call vote. Introduction is approved. Eight in favor, one excused absence. Then, we'll move on in the agenda through presentations. Tonight, it is our pleasure to have the senior advisory council here with us this evening. I'd like to invite Supervisor Derek Tripp forward to get things started. You going to go over there to the computer so you can run the program? You're going to go over there to the computer so you can run the program?
You did that. Mm-hmm. Part of the consent agenda. Okay. Here. It's not on our schedule for the night. No, it isn't.
Just for clarification, city attorney. The question from Mr. Douglas was, did we miss Resolution 2016-126, correct, Steve?
Yeah.
-126. And I said, no, that was part of the consent agenda, it was approved as part of the three items in the beginning of the consent agenda?
Oh, see, because in mine it was moved from...
Yeah, it was...
We moved it onto the consent agenda, so it was moved as part of the consent agenda.
Right.
Okay.
So, I just wanted to assure you, it's not missed, we did approve it. And now we are to the portion of our meeting for presentations. So with that, I would turn it over to Derek.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor and city council. Again, my name is Derek Tripp, and I am the Recreation Supervisor of Senior Services with the Parks, Recreation and Golf Department. We are here again, we are presenting on our Senior Advisory Committee 2016 goals and the accomplishments from those goals. So... Sorry about this.
There you go. There it went.
One of those, okay. I can do that. Thanks, Troy. So the Senior Advisory Committee's purpose is to advise and serve as an information source to participants, to communicate those requests to the Park and Recreation staff, and to assist with fundraising. We have a Good Friends fundraiser, which provides scholarships for seniors, and then also to provide outreach services. They're an extremely valuable resource for us as staff, they represent the community, they serve in a variety of roles, and they help to make this community a quality community for a lifetime. The three subcommittees of the Senior Advisory Committee are the Outreach, the Program Wellness, and the Umbrella. Seventeen seats were filled for 2016 after an extensive recruitment period, which happened in December of 2015. We had twelve action items that we completed in 2016. Those action items were created from an event that we hold at the very beginning of the year, which is open to the general public. We use white paper, they brainstorm ideas, we put them on the white paper, and then they vote on their ideas. Then we take those white paper back, we put them in a document that's easy to read, and then our Senior Advisory Committee kind of decides what goals they want to focus on for that year. First up to present on the Program and Wellness Committee will be Thelma Cole.
Good evening, Mayor Ford and city council. I am Thelma Cole. I'm on the Program Wellness Committee. I'm talking on behalf of part of our members, which are Ollie Gramard, Joanne Hart, Carol Harville, Clara McKee, Leora Richards, Beth Scott, Joanne Vale, Shirley Valentine, Tilly Villarreal, and our staff Glenn Batista and Zach Roth. This last year, we've had a lot of good trips and a lot of good programs. Our fundraiser, the pancake breakfast and the biscuits and gravy turned out very good. We want to thank everybody that was there. And beware for next year and keep your money saved up. Also, we had a senior dance in October, and about thirty people showed up, which everybody said they had a great time. We are having a seniors' Got Talent Show in November this year, the 29th. The entertainment's going to be by our seniors, there's going to be comedy, songs, skits. We're going to have coffee, tea, and dessert, and our centerpieces are going to be created by the seniors advisory. Also later this year, we have a holiday meal program, which we give out just before Christmas to people that are shut in or can't get out. We're working with Dino's at Six and Eighty-Five. Last year, we gave out thirty meals, and we hope to increase that this year. Also, tomorrow evening, we are having karaoke and root beer floats. So that should be fun. We'll find out who has talent and who can laugh the loudest. But I want to say that, I want to thank the city. I myself, and I think I'm talking on behalf of a lot of the other seniors. We have a great staff at the rec center, starting at the seniors, clear up to the very top. And I don't think you can get any better. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you for having us. I'm Carol Harville, and I'm the other half of the Program and Wellness Committee. It's true, we do a lot of things, and what she didn't do was invite you all to our karaoke and root beer float tomorrow. Some of the things that we've done on the Program and Wellness Committee is, we have one member who is really kind of pushing for golf, to spend a day at golf, and so Buffalo Run kindly, you know, put this together for us. And I went, because I got my arm twisted, and we had a blast. It was a fun, fun day, and we had a great lunch at Buffalo Run as well. We also have had some educational sessions. We have one coming up, November ninth, on natural remedies. And these are kind of home cures and things that we can do on our own to help ourselves stay healthy or to take care of minor incidences that happen and just make life uncomfortable sometimes. We also had an eight-part series on chakras, which was very interesting. It was really in-depth, but it was very interesting. We had a big turnout at first, and then it kind of petered off, but happy to have it. We also have one-on-one fitness technology that's for exercise and pedometers and stuff like that. Where it was scheduled and then it was canceled due to not enough enrollment. Part of that was because many of us who wanted to be there were on another trip to St. Louis and Branson and Memphis and Nashville. So, you know, you can tell which one out. We're happy with that. But it is going to be rescheduled, and we're looking forward to that. I bought a Fitbit, and I've been using it and seeing how many steps I walk and how many hours I sleep at nighttime and how much I'm restless. But also just to learn how to incorporate this and to encourage others. Because sometimes things like this encourage people to get more active and to be more mindful of what they're doing, to stay active. Also Glenn Batista, he is always available for one-on-one guidance for any of us when we're up in the exercise area. And so it's nice to know that we have that resource, sorry. Anyway, I want to thank you all for everything that you've given us. I built my house here in 2006, and I retired in 2010, and have been actively involved in this community and the senior center since then. And I'm very grateful for all that I get out of the senior center and from this community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now I want to introduce Jenny Lovridge, who is part of Outreach.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Jenny Lovridge, and I'm speaking on behalf of the Outreach Committee. We have Al Hart, Margaret Garcia, George Maxi, May Mendellis, Linda Wolf, Frances Scheck, Jody Hardy as our staff, and Derek Tripp as our staff. As advisors, we assist our, as advisor, we assist our staffs to do a lot of coordinating. And in our Art Reach efforts, we try to target the older adult senior in the Commerce City area. And what we do is, we have a specialist, Jody Hardy, which we do a lot with, and she's wonderful. And she has got a lot of material out for us. And we have done a lot of tactics to get people to come to our center. And as you see, our pamphlet there, we have had some advisory members deliver some of these to our grocers, our health providers, and some senior living facilities, and some local businesses. And it really has helped, and the pamphlet itself is a great little pamphlet, which I didn't bring. Also too, we had our Memorial Day Parade, which we were able to show off our new vans with our name on it. And it was wonderful, it was great to have this huge monstrosity bus with our Commerce City senior name on it. And it was great to show it off, to show people that we do exist, and we're not little about it. We have had a lot of, we have created a lot of things in our Art Reach of our community event centers at the parks and our giveaways, and we utilized a lot of the parks and stuff. We also have done our name tags, which you've seen, I forgot. But we have done a lot, and this year has been a lot of fun. It's been more out there because we are building our Commerce City, which I'm so proud of the city doing so much. We have, we've gone to a few of the groundbreaking for the new rec center and everything that's out there. And we have really been building this Commerce City, which I am proud to say that I live in. And I want to thank you guys for giving us this opportunity to show that us seniors are not old and decrepit. And thank you for your time. And now I'm going to introduce George Maxi as the Umbrella Committee.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, councilors. I am George Maxi, speaking on behalf of the Advisory Umbrella Committee and its members. Joanne Hart, Leora Richards, Joanne Vale, Linda Wolf, and Derek Tripp, our staff member. Similar to what Derek spoke of earlier, I speak to the philosophy that while understanding that everything is connected, our efforts have to deal with the norm of uncertainty. Please remember that the following is my personal interpretations of our efforts and actions. We're searching for free or low-cost goods and services, we're searching for things that we need to perform. Learning as much as is possible about our options for actions and opportunity. Covering all things with a magnificent cloak. Using surprise with our work and action efforts. Blaming no one for our being marginalized. If we think good things will happen by themselves, we kid ourselves. Building our base of support ourselves. Surrounding ourselves with others, letting the community know that when we retire, we don't quit thinking or being productive. Letting the community know that our life experiences can be very valuable, mentoring opportunities for our community. While being assertive, do we appear to not be making waves? That is a question. Do we have friends, family, or members of the community willing to work for our aims? We should pleasantly confront those who would be indifferent, both from our participants and the community. Our efforts are vulnerable if we aggressively confront. We are ready for those who would oppose our efforts. We should not confront where we can't succeed. If we are confronted and no gain appears possible, leave. Always have Plan B available. We recognize the tools we need to proceed. Our efforts include using any media to explain why we feel as we do, what we are doing, and what we want to accomplish. The more mobile we are, the more effective we are. If we find freebies we can't use, see that others get them. We would become connoisseurs of methods that will help us and others. A poor plan well-executed is better than a good plan poorly executed. We make every effort count. Causes are worth working for. Inquire into and question everything in our world. Assume all rules are subject to change, therefore provisional. Assume that anything we might do may cause trouble to some system, do it anyway. If the potential for the common good is great. All social systems have to be to society's benefit. Okay, enough of philosophy. What good things have been happening to our older adults? Cross-committee and participant communications have improved. Buffalo Run Workshop, Steve Timms on community development. Life Isn't Easy Roundtable Discussion, Medicare classes, tips on fitness, our evening dance, how-to-make-friends class, 9/11 callers, seniors' Got Talent Show, holiday meal delivery, soccer game provided by council, and we thank you dearly. The ATSF train ride provided by council, and we again appreciate that. Three more useful classes before the end of the year. Now I will ask our team to return for your questions. I might make one more comment before I go. We have a retired person retiring once again. Jenny Lovridge, who has talked earlier, after four-plus years of running the Art Reach program, is retiring from that. She's getting burned out, folks. So anyhow, if we'll bring everybody back up here, if you have questions that you would address, do so.
Thank you. Does the, uh...
You're a friend.
Yeah. Does the city council have any questions for the Senior Advisory Council at this time?
Yes.
Go with Mr. Amador.
Oh wow, this is always my, one of the most exciting things for me to see at council from a Parks and Recreation standpoint, and the Get More Out of Life. The disco party was phenomenal, that was great, man, you guys know how to get down. But it's just refreshing to see that you're still engaged in our community and that staff is helping. You know, I always listen for how staff is helping you resolve the things and get more out of life. That's what it's about, so it's exciting, and thank you.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Carson.
Thank you for the presentation. It's amazing, these presentations that you guys do. It is with your passion that you go forward, and I thank you, because everything that you do, every measure, we all will benefit. The age factor is increasing year after year after year. Cities need to be able to deal with that, because I know when my great-grandparents were alive, the age I am now was almost unexpected. So we need to make sure that we answer when you call for requests and needs that you have. But I will say that out of all of the groundbreakings and the parade and everything that we do, your presence has been there. And I want to thank you for that, because that speaks high of our city and who we are. And without your presence, then there's no way to spread that word. I know you volunteer a lot, I know it's a lot of hours, but thank you.
Thank you. But we have a lot of fun doing it, so that's the name of the game.
Well, that's great. That's the Get More Out of Life, right?
That's right.
Mr. Bullitt.
Uh, I want to thank you for coming this afternoon and this evening. And I was gonna ask Thelma, where did you get that red sweater from? You want to comment on that red sweater, Thelma?
Yes, I'm very proud of it. I don't know whether I deserve it, but for not getting it back.
Oh, you deserve it.
You deserved it, or you would not have gotten it. I see that George has on his red vest.
But mine's better than his.
Okay. Yours is...
They couldn't afford sleeves that year.
Okay. But again, I want to thank you all for your dedication to the different programs and advisory committees that you're on. And Jenny, you can't be getting burned out. I mean, this is, it's easy. Come on, you know.
Oh, good. Does that mean that you're gonna join us if we, if I come back?
Okay, well, okay. You come back and then you look and see if you see me, okay. But again, thank you.
Mr. Douglas.
Uh, thank you, guys. I want to echo my colleagues. I really appreciate that you guys participate the way you do. The Senior Advisory Committee is a useful tool to the city. It helps guide us in our future growth. And I think now, you know, there's not too many places where we have senior housing, senior communities. And that's part of our, our growth plan, is to have those places. For we, I mean, heck, I'm in my 50s now, mid-50s. And I think back when I was younger and people in 50s or 60s. Well, I'm there now. And it, it's, you get more out of life when you're active, when you're involved, when you communicate, and you surround yourself by good people. And so I appreciate that you guys are a great network for our seniors. They really appreciate the fact that you guys are involved in their lives and you give them something forward, the meaning of life. It's, it's, it's tough out there. But I appreciate the source and continue your effort, Jenny. Because, you know, four years, I mean, I'm on my second term and I'm five years, so you can do four more. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Teeter.
Thank you, young people, for your presentation tonight. I, Thelma made a quote, a statement about scholarships. Maybe you elaborate for the people, the audience out there as to exactly what you give those scholarships for. And also, I've, I've been peeking ahead at the, your agenda coming up. And I see you're going to New York next year on your trip. And for anybody out there that, this group is moving. And I would, I would love to get involved with this group and go to New York next year with them, so, but they're moving out there. They're going places. So if you'd like to get involved with this committee and this group, you should move forward with it.
I, the trip that we've done this year, the ones to St. Louis, Little Rock, Branson, Memphis, and Nashville was fantastic. It was nine days, and I'll tell you, it was great.
I bet you had a good time, Thelma. I know you. Okay, George is back there raising his hand.
Yeah, George, go right ahead.
I have your permission?
Yeah.
No, no.
It gets your loss if you did.
I know, let me back away.
You, you start your conversation there with, uh...
Scholarships.
Scholarships. What were you speaking to?
Well, I'm sure people will be curious out there in the, in the, and...
It's a good friend.
Yes.
It's actually a fund for those people who economically cannot afford some of the... It is a, the amount is $50 per year. Use it. Anybody who asks for it can get it and use it however they want for whatever programs that we have. Usually, in our, if it's a $2,000 trip someplace, it won't go very far on that. But the program...
It won't go, it doesn't go for that. It won't go for that. That's, that's just local.
Okay, I'm giving, and I, my answer to these ladies is yes, dear.
Yes. Thank you, George. I knew the answer to that, but I think there's a lot, there's a lot of people out there that would like to hear that.
Yeah.
There's applications available at the senior center. They just come in and ask for it, you know, by financial records or anything, so...
And good. And again, I'd like to thank you all for your presentations tonight.
Thank you, guys.
Yes, it's always a pleasure to have you come in and present. I think it's not just beneficial to us as council members to see all the different things that you're doing at the senior center to help provide opportunity for seniors and people in our community that may not have someone else at home. That this may be where they go to have friendships and, and to, to be around camaraderie. It's, it's a great thing that you do. And it's good that you come here on a regular basis. And the residents that are watching at home can see. We know that there is a potential for some senior development in the Dog Track property that would maybe increase membership at the senior center. But you guys are always very active. And we always see the people who are even more active are usually involved on all these committees. And George, I'm really glad that the pecking order has been determined now. And if there's something you want to concentrate on, come back with some way to deal with pocket gophers. Would be very helpful if we had some way to deal with pocket gophers.
Most of the thoughts that I have along that line take place between 1:00 and 3:00 in the morning.
I got you. I don't disagree. But always a pleasure. And anytime we get to see Thelma when she's not selling something, even much more of a benefit. So thank you all for coming in this evening. It's a pleasure having you as part of our organization within the city.
Thank you, guys. Thank you.
Yep. Okay, next I'm gonna call forward Susan Carver Hall from the KIPCAC Committee to give a capital program update. Good evening, Susan.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. Good to see all of you tonight.
Good to see you.
Um, first of all, we have slides, I believe. On the first one, my name is Susan Carver Hall. I'm co-chair, let's try this again.
There you go.
Co-chair of the Capital Improvement Citizens Advisory Committee, also known as KIPCAC. As, as a committee, it's our goal to advise the city and inform and engage the community in capital improvement projects. As you can see, a lot is happening, and I'm very proud of the city's recent achievements. We celebrated the grand openings at Turnberry Park on August 16th and Villages East Park on September 22nd. This means that all three parks are completed in the voter-approved $137 million capital improvement program, which completes five projects by January 1st, 2019. We celebrated the groundbreaking of the new recreation center at Second Creek on October 15th. Frontera Park and Paradise Island Pool opened back in 2015. This means that all but one of the five-year projects in the program have begun construction. The final project to begin is the existing rec center renovation, which is set to start and complete in 2018. There's also work within the capital improvement program that is not in the five-year promise, but is currently tracking similar timelines to complete in 2018. We broke ground on the Highway 2 widening project on October 26th. And next year, we're expected to begin construction on the Tower Road, Pena Boulevard, On Ramp, and the RTD rail station. There's a lot going on in this city. Commerce City is on task to complete all projects on time and within budget. And I'm very proud to be involved in the Citizens Advisory Committee. Thank you, members of City Council and staff, for taking the time to listen to the community and advisory committees. Your continued pursuit in making Commerce City's vision a quality community of a lifetime is quickly coming to fruition. Before I introduce the Director of Program Management, I have two comments I'd like to make. First of all, I want you to all know that this is one of the best advisory committees I've ever served on. They are hardworking, they are knowledgeable, and they are getting the word out to our citizenry about these five projects every chance we get. They are so knowledgeable. You know we show up at your study sessions. And, I mean, we're just, we're your voice. And I, I personally want to thank you for that because it means a lot to be part of this city and have a voice. The other thing I want to say is a personal note. Mayor and City Council members, I want you to know that you are one of the best city council that I've ever seen in this city in the 48 years I've been here. You are so hardworking. And I only wish that the citizenry of Commerce City could see all of the things that you are doing. And I am so proud to know each one of you and to be serving you in the manner that I am. So thank you again for all of your hard work. And we really, really appreciate it. So now, I'd like to introduce the Director of Program Management, Scott Herrin, Herrgernruder. He always saves me wrong.
Thank you, Susan. Thank you, Susan. Susan?
Any questions? I'm sorry.
Yeah, that was, you know, it, it's, it's awesome that we're able to have a committee like this. KIPCAC has done amazing things from the beginning. We had to start it two years ahead of the passage of the ballot measure. And now with all of the projects underway, many of them being completed, the engagement, and I think, is, is very important because serving on a city council is usually a very thankless job. Most people don't understand the little things that you do. I really appreciate you acknowledging the efforts that the council that I get to work with and their efforts out of the 13 years that I've been on city council. This is by far the most productive and best city council that I've had the opportunity to serve with. So thank you for acknowledging that because the people that are sitting up here, they do a lot. And I'm not talking about myself. I'm talking about this council. They do a lot, and it takes away from their families. And it's great to have someone come into a city council meeting after 13 years and acknowledge what that effort means. So thank you very much for the words that you had to say and all of the work that you do serving on the community, the committee for this community.
Thank you for your great leadership, council.
Thank you. All right, Scott, come on up.
Good evening, Mayor, members of City Council. Thank you for having us here tonight. But wow, what a presentation by Susan. And Sandy from the Advisory Committee is also here. And let me just echo the enthusiasm and the energy and the passion that they're really bringing to all this. It really is fantastic. And we've really been building up, I think, momentum with that advisory committee throughout the life of the program. And so good things have really happened. And I hope you're feeling that benefit of being informed from that group. This is the 11th quarterly installment of the Capital Program Quarterly Update. So we had the midpoint presentation back in August, and now we're one quarter beyond that. It's hard to believe. But I only wish that Susan would have said spoiler alert when she started because she took all the good news right up front about all the great things that are going on. So I'm gonna have some interesting facts and statistics here for you on the status, as we always do. But she did a great job, and, and there are exciting things going on. On behalf of the city management team and our colleagues in Public Works, Parks and Recreation, my colleague Danielle Gershley from CH2M is here tonight as well. It really is a team sport in this delivery. We're working with every single functional department in the city in the execution of this program. And as you'll see in the slides as we go forward here, just how much involvement there is from all of these different folks. As a reminder, the 2K background was issued. 2K was approved by the voters in November of 2013, committed to five projects in five years. And as Susan indicated, a number of those projects are now completed. We'll touch on that a bit. The program goals and objectives were to deliver high-quality facilities, spend taxpayer dollars wisely and transparently, and complete the projects on time. As a reminder, the overall program budget's $137 million. But we've just issued the second issuance of debt for $66 million. We do have some other funding sources of $6.9 million, primarily grants that have been received thus far. And we currently have expenditures of $20 million through this year. Now, that expenditure rate is gonna go up quickly as we move these projects into the construction phase. On the revenue side, so again, this was based on a 1% increase in the sales and use tax revenue. And in 2014 and 15, those revenues were on the order of about $10 million. On the bottom of the slide there, you see that the target is still $9 to $10 million. And through July, we were at about $6.5 million in gross receipts. So, so far, everything is tracking on plan on the revenue side. Importantly, on the schedule side, if we follow the old adage, keep your eyes on the prize. Let me just focus your eyes on the gold stars that you see there because that's what we're targeting for completion. And as Susan indicated, we've got several projects that have been completed now to the left of the red line. And we have other projects that are in construction. Tower Road is under construction. The new recreation center is under construction. And the existing recreation center is getting ready to go out for design bids. As you see by the curve here, while there's been a lot of great work done to date, a lot of that work has been setting the table for the heavy lifting that's about to come forward here. That big curve that you see on the right of the slide represents Tower Road and represents the new recreation center. And then as we get out into 2018, there's a little blip up on that, and that's the existing recreation center being done. The work done on the left represents the outdoor pool and Frontera. So you can see, we've got a lot of work left to do. But the good news is, is we've got some of the big projects, Tower Road and the new rec center, under contract right now. Again, looking at the 2K projects, we have four of those projects that have been completed or in the acceptance phase, moving in to close out. The new recreation center, existing recreation center and Tower Road are currently our three active projects in Measure 2K. On the CIP side, there's a lot going on as well. I won't read all of this. But importantly, on the Public Works side, the Chambers Multi-Use Path and Bridge is currently under construction. And the 104th Widening Phase 3B is in the closeout phase. That was a, that was a long and important project. On the Parks, Recreation, and Golf side, you know that the Buffalo Run Clubhouse was completed earlier this year. And currently, the Sand Creek project is in the design phase. So let's go through some highlights very, very quickly here on the Measure 2K in Q3. Under contracting, you all helped us get the GMP, or Guaranteed Maximum Price Construction Contract, for the new recreation center, the infrastructure work. That was awarded and under contract back in August. On the design side, we've issued the final design for the new recreation center for the site and foundations. And we've currently got some of that work underway right now, under construction. In construction, we completed Turnberry and Villages East Neighborhood Parks, as Susan mentioned. And on construction, we have mobilized and started the new recreation center infrastructure. On the CIP side in Q3, from a contracting standpoint, a major contract, Highway 2 construction contract was awarded, and design proposals were received for the 72nd Colorado North Metro RTD Station. On design, Tower Road, Pena Boulevard, On Ramp, the environmental work began. And on the construction side, Chambers Road, Road, Path and Pedestrian Bridge. As we look ahead now into the fourth quarter, and again, spoiler alert, because Susan already updated you on many of the great things you've attended here in the last 30 days or so of, of the fourth quarter. We've got design proposals for the existing recreation center that we're going to be getting out on the street. From a design standpoint, we're going to complete and issue the final design for the new recreation center. And we're going to continue design of the Infrastructure Package B, which is the roadways in the floodplain area. And then lastly, and as you've already seen, the construction on the new recreation center has begun in Q4 here already. What you see on there, on the pictures, is the foundation footings for the gymnasium at the new recreation center on the north side. From a safety... From a safety perspective, I would just like to remind you that if any of you are driving on Highway 2, please keep your eyes on the road. We have an attractive nuisance going on now with the new recreation center, and we don't want you looking off to the side, so let's be safe because Highway 2 is going to be under construction as well. But anyway, it's great news, there's a lot of wonderful things going on, and what you see in these pictures is proof positive that we've been trying to live up to our commitment, and when I say "our," I'm talking about our program team as well as all the departments of the city to follow up on the authority and the approvals you've given us to move these projects forward. So, here we are, as winter approaches, we've got foundations and footings coming up, and structural steel will be arriving early next year. So, great news story on that. On the CIP front, the design of Seventy-Second Colorado RTD station will be starting, and the construction on Highway 2 and the completion of the pedestrian bridge at Chambers. So, we're pretty excited with the progress. As you saw by the curves, though, there's a lot of work to do. The good news is, we've got a lot of that under contract, and what does that mean? In this kind of market condition right now, having this work out for bid and under contract is, is big because it's giving us more cost certainty around the delivery of the projects that you all committed to your citizens would be done, and we're delivering those projects within the budget that we've got. So, thank you again for the opportunity to give you this quarterly update, and if there's any questions that we can answer, we'd be happy to do that.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
For coming in with the update, and I would say, based on the winter that we're having, we're probably able to save some time with not having any bad weather. It's been great construction weather for, for the projects with Tower Road and with the rec center. And Highway 2, I'm sure, will be underway here shortly. So, thanks for the update, and thank you, ladies, for coming in this evening and being a part of the KIPCAC organization.
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Amador, did you have any questions?
First, I'm going to knock on wood so that you don't jinx us on this lovely winter that we're having. We're definitely going to pick up some time on the foundations and the Tower Road, but the pictures, I zoomed in on the iPad, and it looks like they were taken last Monday. So, I'm sure we have concrete already poured out there, and we're going and going and going, so. Many people and residents still don't know that we're getting a new rec center. I run into people all the time. "We're getting a rec center?" I say, "Yes, it's going to be up north," and they say, "I drive by that every day, and twice a day, once on the way out and once on the way in." And I say, "Have you seen the ten-by-ten sign that's hanging out there?" "No, I haven't seen it, but I drive by it every day." So, thank you to the project management team, thank you to the KIPCAC that's out there making sure that we get everything that we said that we would deliver, and also, thank you to staff because we are doing a lot of things, and it's a tall order. I know that the praise for the non-participants, in a way, as I like to call it, the city council, we're up here making decisions, but it's actually staff that is pulling the strings and making this happen, so I wouldn't quite say we're non-participants, but at least we have a good vision of where we're going and where we're at, so, thank you.
Thank you, councilman. Councilwoman Carson?
Thank you for the update. It's all so exciting, and thank you for the kind words, Susan. But, in all honesty, Andrew probably said it best, we all have really good visions up here, and we all know how to create that, but it's, it's staff and it's the citizens who are really doing the work here. None of this could happen without citizens supporting and volunteering and giving up themselves, and thank God, staff stuck around when 2K passed, rolled up their sleeves. So, like I said, I truly do appreciate the kind words, but it's citizens of Commerce City, and you and Sandy are prime examples out there. There's not a council member up here that won't tell you how important all these committees and boards are to our success. We cannot be successful without that, so thank you.
Great, seeing no one else, thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Look forward to the next report. All right. Next, I'm going to invite City Manager McBroom to do his presentation on the third quarter work plan.
Thank you, Mayor Ford. It's my pleasure to walk through our progress to date this year on executing our administrative work plan. The administrative work plan is a product of turning city council's budget for the current fiscal year, which was approved in November of last year, and turning it into an action plan to make sure that the work we do day in and day out is properly aligned with accomplishing city council's goals. So, to that end, we create and adopt an administrative work plan to make sure we've properly thought through what we need to get accomplished during the current year, and so, this is our opportunity to update you on our progress. As I have done in years past, I'll move quickly through the information, I won't cover everything on the slides, but I'm certainly happy to answer any questions that you might have about any of the information in the slides or any of the background information that we've attached to the slideshow. And we're working with a PDF version of our slides tonight, so thank you, Roger, for helping me out. Again, the 2016 work plan is divided into two broad categories, projects and operations. It is all organized as our tasks relate to accomplishing city council's five goals. Goal number three is particularly related to capital projects, and so, that's covered previously tonight in Mr. Hergenrager's presentation, and this is an update on just our third quarter update. Next, our next update will be in February of next year, and it will include some year-end information as we collect data at the end of the year to, to share with you our accomplishments over all four quarters. So, tonight's presentation will just focus on the third quarter. So, first of all, the first council goal that we're focusing on in the presentation is city council's goal to develop a balanced and vibrant economy to improve socioeconomic status. Items of note during the third quarter, the Small Business Development Center and Adelante Community Development partnered to provide training programs for small business at the city's Small Business Resource Center. The city also partnered with CC-BPA and the Commerce City Business Alliance to host a joint small business networking event at El Hardin. We also actively worked to strengthen our relationships with the trucking industry. Will Consuegra from our Economic Development Division attended during the third quarter the Colorado Motor Carriers Association Annual Conference. It's an opportunity for him to actively engage with a number of Commerce City companies that are members of that organization. We also marketed commercial development opportunities in the city by sponsoring the Colorado Real Estate Journal Land and Development Conference. It gave us an opportunity to market commercial sites in our city to three hundred attendees at that, at that conference. This will be old news to council, but for those listening at home, we were able to announce in the third quarter the decision by McLean Food Services, Inc. to initiate construction on a new two-hundred-and-sixteen-thousand-square-foot industrial facility in the Nexus at DIA Technology Center, which is at Tower Road and roughly Eighty-first Avenue. It'll be a thirty-million-dollar investment, bringing two-hundred-and-fifty-five new jobs to our community. Additionally, Old Dominion Freight Line announced an expansion in Commerce City, adding an additional forty-two thousand square feet at their current site at fifty-six oh-one Holly Street. And also, noteworthy to us was an investment by a St. Louis development company who's purchased forty acres again in the Nexus at DIA Center, and they are planning a seven-hundred-thousand square-foot speculative industrial facility. What's significant about this is, without having a specific tenant identified, it is not easy to secure financing for a speculative facility, so the fact that this company's made an investment in land and intends to proceed with the facility shows the strength of land in our community. It's a, it's a clear sign that the market is growing for vacant industrial land in our city, particularly in that Tower Road corridor. We also include as part of this quarterly update a number of economic indicators that we track throughout the year. What's, what's important to note on this slide is, if you look in the third quarter report summary, the third quarter column, what we want to see is green arrows, whether up or down or sideways, if it indicate it's trending the way we would like it to trend. If it's red, it means it's not trending the way we would like it to trend, so we're looking at those more closely. What's particularly of interest is the number of, of red arrows when it comes to vacancy rates. Vacancy rates are actually increasing, which is an interesting trend that we're watching carefully, especially given how strong the economy has been for available space in our community. So, these, again, are, are indicators that help give us a broader picture about the status of the local economy in the Commerce City area. When it comes to overall development activity, private construction activity continues to be very strong in our community, as is evidenced by our third quarter permit and inspection activity reports. We did see a hundred-and-seventy-two new residential permits in the third quarter. You can see how much higher that number was compared to third quarter in either 2015 or 2014. You can see a lot of construction activity when you drive around town. What's also interesting to note on this slide is the number of active land use cases at eighty-eight. That indicates, in addition to all the active construction within our community, we have eighty-eight cases actively in the pipeline moving towards construction within our community. And you can see, that's a bit higher than this time last year, significantly higher than the number of active land use cases two years ago in the third quarter in 2014. Also of note, on the right side of the slide, for the first time in a very long time, we have multifamily owner-occupied townhomes under construction in our community. As, as council knows, problems associated with construction defects, liability for builders in the state of Colorado has been a limiting factor in the number of attached owner-occupied units under construction in the state. We know there's pent-up demand for owner-occupied attached units in our community, so we see it as a terrific sign that those twenty-four units are underway in the northern part of When it comes to continually looking to improve city government, to maintain or improve levels of service, we have a number of things going on within the organization to make us a more effective, more efficient city government organization. Items of note on this slide, we are continuing to see increases in participation in our wellness activities for employees within the organization. We're certainly committed to attracting and retaining a high-quality workforce. We also want city employees to be healthy and happy and engaged in their work, and so, the increase in wellness activities is, is a very good sign. We're showing strong gains in that area, and a great deal of credit on the increase in our wellness activities goes to the city's wellness team. We have a number of employees who volunteer to serve on that team that are committed to looking for ways to help all of us as employees be healthier and safer. Additionally, related to safety, we did roll out a new safety program. We have a separate team of city employees involved on the safety team, again, focused on having a safer workforce, to make sure the work that we do, as important as it is, can be done safely. A key thing that occurred in the third quarter, we have a safety slogan. It's our, kind of our top-of-mind mantra, "Safety never sleeps." The point is, no matter how important the work is, no matter how, how important it is for us to stay on schedule and on budget to get things done, it's not more important than doing it safely. And so, the point for employees is be productive, get good work done, but more important than anything else, please do it safely. And we're seeing improvements in safety within the organization and seeing fewer employees getting hurt on the job. Additionally, as council knows, to be compliant with the Affordable Care Act, as non-full-time employees work a certain number of hours over a certain period of time, they become benefit-eligible. During the third quarter, sixteen employees reached that threshold and eleven elected the city's medical coverage. Additionally, we, in a strong economy, we're very closely tracking employee turnover. In a strong economy, we're going to see employee turnover. However, our turnover rate so far this year, at twenty-point-eight percent, is a bit higher than we'd like. Our goal is to have employee turnover at less than fifteen percent by the end of the year, so we're actively doing things to understand when we do see turnover, why is that? And so, HR is getting ever better at understanding when employees choose to leave the organization, why are they doing that, and are there things we need to change to reduce that, that turnover rate? Moving on, additionally, one of city council's key goals is developing and maintaining the public infrastructure to improve community appearance. Some key accomplishments of note in the third quarter, staff from Public Works did present an overview of the city's garbage and recycling program at a national conference. It's always nice when our staff is asked to present things that we're doing for benefit to folks around the country. To me, it shows that we're very much on sort of the cutting edge of best practices, and certainly, our, our shift to, the shift that we made in our garbage and recycling program was a tremendous accomplishment for our staff and provided a number of benefits for employees and helped out the city's budget as well. Additionally, you, you heard Scott Hergenrager talk about this, we have put out for, for responses to a request for proposals, design services to make some improvements around the city's light rail station at Seventieth and Colorado Boulevard. We expect proposals back, I'm sorry, proposals have been received, so we're evaluating those with a, with a goal of assigning a contract for those design services here shortly. Another metric that we're actively tracking is the number of garbage and recycling pickups that we miss. When we shifted to, to our new garbage and recycling program, there were some changes made to routes, and so, we're actively monitoring the number of pickups that we miss, and it's a little higher than we like, as you can see by that number, so it's something that the Public Works staff actively works on with waste management to try to understand why those mistakes are happening so that we can continue to reduce the number of missed When it comes to improving resident health and safety, a couple of items that I wanted to highlight on this slide, we are very active participants in the, in the Healthy Eating and Active Living Program, which is a statewide program. In fact, we're considered the statewide leader as far as city efforts to create a healthy eating and active, active living community. An item of note, Mayor Protem Bullock, who's been a leader in this regard, was asked to present at a, at the Public Health of the Rockies Conference. So, again, it was another opportunity to, to shine a light on positive things happening in Commerce City, and I heard a lot of positive things about Mayor Protem's comments that day. In addition, at council's direction, we did do an assessment of our city vending machines in an effort to make our vending machines healthier options for employees and visitors to city facilities. In fact, I saw a draft report of that assessment today to see how we can get the key recommendations when that assessment implemented. Additionally, as, as council knows, we did hire Danielle Villarreal during the third quarter, who's the city's community liaison. In addition to providing staff support to the Cultural Council and the Quality Community Foundation, she's the key staff support for the Youth Commission. The Youth Commission did begin its twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen session work, including getting a number of new members appointed. We expect that all seats will be filled within the fourth quarter, so, by the end of the year, including the, the commission's first adult citizen member. The Youth Commission historically has been youth, with city staff providing staff support, but it was important to have an adult member, not just adult staff, supporting the Youth Commission, so we are excited about that as well. All right, moving rapidly forward, again, with regard to improving resident health and safety, our Neighborhood Services Division of Community Development had a very active quarter. You can see the number totals for courtesy notices, notices of violation, and court cases, all are trending above our planned goals for, for the quarter and for the year, so that's a very good sign. a very good sign. In addition, we did see an increase in complaints regarding potentially illegal marijuana growth activities in residential areas. You could see there, the trend does seem to be increasing, so that's something that we'll be monitoring to see if there's other steps we need to take to reduce the likelihood of folks violating the city's ordinance as related to growing marijuana in residential And last, whoops, sorry, I'm one slide ahead. We also track a number of key metrics in the Police Department. One of the most important ones is our ability to respond to Priority One calls within a timely fashion. Our goal is to respond to those Priority One calls in seven minutes or less. You can see, we're a little above that. We were a little above that this time last year, so it's an area of emphasis for us as we continue to staff up. In terms of vacant positions in the Police Department, we're the lowest we've been in quite some time, but there's also a bit of a time lag between hiring new police officers and having them actively on the street working shifts. So as those folks become fully functioning members of the department, my expectation is that response time will start to come down. We also, as we've been talking recently, particularly with our discussions with the Water District Community Engagement, is a key area of emphasis for us. It's extremely important to continually communicate two ways, send information out to the community and have a variety of ways for the community to provide feedback and information back to the city. The good news is, all our methods of social marketing and information out to the community are trending in the right direction. It's pretty remarkable, we were not tracking this information as recently as a couple of years ago, but we still continue to see strong gains in our ability to get important information out to the community, so that's a very positive sign for us. Again, a very big area of emphasis for us that we will continue to be working on. And certainly, last but certainly not least, we always keep a very close eye on our budget performance. We're through now third quarters, through three quarters of executing the 2016 budget, and the good news is that our revenues are trending above our expenditures. Obviously, that's a very important position to be in, so our revenue, according to budget, should be at seventy-five percent through the third quarter, so our revenue is down a bit. The good news on this slide, though, is that our expenditures are down quite a bit, while at the same time, I believe we're getting excellent work done. So staff continues to spend money very wisely, with a clear eye towards accomplishing city council's goals, so the fact that we're spending less than the budget, I see as a very good sign, because you can see by the quarterly update, we're getting very good results. The efforts that we're putting in, I think, are getting very good results throughout the organization. So with that, again, I move through the information rather quickly. Always happy to answer any questions. There's a ton of additional supporting documentation in the packet, so please, I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Counsel, have any comments or questions for the city manager on his quarterly update?
Thank you for it.
Seeing none, I appreciate it. Yeah, very informative, and I think it's great that we do this so that the residents that are watching at home have the opportunity to see exactly what's going on. All right, we'll move into the next item on the agenda, Administrative Council business. And there is one item on here that we need to take up. It's looking for a motion in a second to authorize me to sign a letter to the U.S. Postal Service dealing with our zip code issue. Is there a motion, Mr. Bullock?
A move to have you sign the letter to the U.S. Postal Service to fix our zip code problem.
Attempt.
Attempt to fix our zip code.
Mr. Amador.
Second.
Motion in a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion's carried. City manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I did have one additional item of Administrative Council business. The City Council Retreat Planning Subcommittee has now met a couple of times towards preparing for City Council's traditional winter retreat, and one of the things that was discussed when the committee met two weeks ago was identifying dates for the winter retreat. Traditionally, City Council has the retreat in January or February of next year, and it's just not that far away now. So the committee did tentatively identify Friday evening, January twenty-seventh, and Saturday, January twenty-eighth. The committee thought that Friday evening and Saturday would be a good idea this year because the Metro North Chamber Gala is Saturday evening, the twenty-eighth, and so will want to be done mid-afternoon on the twenty-eighth, so the Friday evening might be necessary to make sure there's ample time to cover the items that the Retreat Committee intends to put on the Retreat Agenda. But I wanted to bring that up in this setting so that council had a chance to weigh in and make sure that everybody is available on those dates. Mr. Bacleodon, he's not here tonight, but he had indicated previously that those dates work for him. Is there anybody who would not be able to attend January twenty-seventh in the evening or twenty-eighth from morning until mid-afternoon? This might be the easiest time we've ever had, coming up with dates for the winter retreat. If those dates work, I think it might be useful to have council take an action just to set those dates for the winter retreat.
Is there a motion, Mr. Amador?
Motion for January twenty-seventh and twenty-eighth for the winter retreat.
Thank you. Councilwoman Elliott.
Second the motion.
There are a motion in a second to set those dates. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, saying nay. Motion's carried. All right, now we'll go into Administrative Council business. We'll start with Mr. Douglas.
Yes, I had a question about a safe crossing. Let me bring it up here. It's over a river run, intersection of Hundred and Twelve and Oakland Street, on the southeast side, I'm sorry, on the south side of Hundred and Twelve in Oakland. The intersection there, I can't think of the subdivision over there, but that intersection there, when you go north, it connects to the elementary school, and so a lot of folks who live in that subdivision on the south side of Hundred and Twelve and Oakland, having a tough time getting their kids across that walk there, even when the kids are present in the walkway, because there's only one walkway there that's painted. Cars are not slowing down, and parents are feeling just really unsafe to walk their kids to school, so they're driving them. The weather's fairly good. They prefer to walk their children to the school instead of driving, but it's becoming a big problem. So I was asking if we could look at what warrant there would be to add a crossing signal there, as we do, as we have done in the reunion neighborhood? I think this would be beneficial for the Hundred and Twelve and Oakland Street to have one.
We can absolutely look at options.
Okay.
Any other, I'd weigh in, living there, having Stillwater right across the street. It's not just an exposure to kids, but there are a lot of people that jog and walk from those neighborhoods, adults, that road, Hundred and Twelve, you know, it's a high-speed limit anyway, but people just don't anticipate the pedestrian traffic that crosses there, so I think it's worth looking into. I know I've had to ask the Police Department to bring out the trailers and set them up. This is crosswalk ahead, you know, so I know it's been a problem for quite some time. It's just high speeds, an unexpected place to see pedestrians because of the openness of the road, so if we could look at that, I think Steve's right on that.
Okay, and the other thing I want to bring up is, where are we at with the construction on Tower Road in the detour off of E470?
I don't know offhand, Mr. Douglas. We can get an update in next week's City Manager Update, unless it's the subject of potential negotiations, and then we can communicate it to you in a less public way.
That's fine.
Thank you.
All right. Mr. Bullock.
I was just going to make a, it was River Oaks, not Stillwater.
All right. River Oaks to River Run crossing. All right, Mr. Amador.
Thank you. With the improvements to Seventy-second Avenue, a few islands, well, a couple of islands have been put in the center of Seventy-second, one close to Oneida and one close to, I believe, Magnolia. I did notice, and it is hard to see some of these six-inch curbs in the middle of the road. The one closest to Magnolia has multiple tire marks on it, black marks that people keep hitting that thing, so I'm not sure if we can put a yellow or some kind of reflector on that, just so that people see it, because it is, if you don't know that it's there, you could hit it. So that would be one, and then the other one, oh, go for it, Mr. City Manager?
Yes. And Maria is approaching.
Yes, the work isn't completed on that yet, and so there will be reflecting, reflective signs that go in, as well as reflectors on it, but we'll evaluate whether the curb should be painted as well.
Very good, thank you. And then my second item was over at Seventy-Fourth and Colorado Boulevard, basically where you jump off of I-76 right there, or actually, let me verify, if you were heading north on Colorado Boulevard to make a left turn, there's a big pile, and it's really more than a pile, it's like a big speed bump of asphalt in the right lane where you turn left. I'm not sure if that was filling a pothole or just emptying out a dump truck there. It's been there for a little while, but if you have a sports car, you're toast. So if we could just take a look at that, I don't know who owns that road or whatnot, but that would be awesome to take a look at, so thank you.
A state highway, but if we could get something out to them, letting them know. All right, any other Administrative Council business? Seeing none, we'll move forward, move forward to reports. City manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We did distribute via email just prior to tonight's meeting this week's edition of the City Manager Update. We have a handful of updates, one regarding our pavement maintenance work that's ongoing throughout the community. An update on East Hundred and Twelve Avenue, East Chambers Road, we've done some gravel road stabilization work with an update there. We also included results from the Telephone Town Hall that occurred on October twenty-sixth. We have an update on the patching that occurred on the detour route, Buckley Road and Eighty-Eightth, and just as an FYI, the winter hours for the Bison Grill will begin Monday, November fourteenth, so the restaurant will be open eight a.m. to eight p.m., Sunday through Thursday, eight a.m. to nine p.m., Friday and Saturday. So winter hours opening at eight a.m. will start a week from today on November fourteenth. We also have an update from Congressman Pearl Mutter for you to review as well. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, city attorney?
I have no report this evening.
All right, I'll get into mine. We had the Water Commission meeting, myself and Jason both attended. We talked about more collaboration. I know it was right before the meeting up in Reunion over the water hardness issue. Then we had Rotary, Rotary, and then Kaleidoscope of Hope, an event for CASA, Executive Committee Breakfast, and I was, I went to it, no one else made it, you know, you had some other things going on, but they're actually talking about the Executive Committee Breakfast becoming more engaged and more mandatory to be there. So I wanted to make sure that we, we know that's ramping up to be more than just a breakfast now, and we talked about the metro vision and concerns with metro vision, and they're wanting to be able to be more of a body that can make comment collectively for the region. Area Boards Meeting, Rick was there with me. We had the Instill Steel Groundbreaking over, off of Rosemary. Rotary again, Highway Two Groundbreaking, which I was unable to attend. AdCOG Dinner the same night, which I was unable to attend, and the Telephone Town Hall Meeting, which I was able to attend, and I want to thank Mayor Protem and council for covering those things, as my youngest daughter had our second grandchild, and it was her first, so it seemed like I was at the hospital forever. But thank goodness, we have the team that we have, so it was well-covered. Had a lunch meeting with the new owners of the King Super Shopping Center over here on Parkway, gave them an update on what we have planned at the Dog Track. We had an ACC meeting, Airport Coordinating Committee meeting, myself and Rick, and of course, Robert Seasley was there with us, and that's progressing slower than I think could be, but it's progressing. I also, I was able to get out to the Creepy Hollows Fall Festival. Congratulations to the Parks Department, really a great event for the kids in the community. And then I met with Paul Bergman, who is with the International Economic Development, and I'm on the Advisory Council for the region with Mayor Hancock, and we talked about engagement of the ACC as we move forward with marketing strategies from an international perspective. And then Rotary again, and here we are back to another City Council meeting. We did have a little longer report because we had a fifth Monday for Halloween in there, and I would gladly open it up for anyone who would like to add to my report. Mr. Amador.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd also like to acknowledge and report that Commerce City did present a presentation to the Colorado Hispanic Contractors of Colorado. I'd like to acknowledge the M&amp;M's, Maria from Public Works, and Michelle from Economic Development for, sorry, it should be the other way around, Economic Development and Maria Help Support. Either way, they did represent Commerce City very well. Mr. Mayor did talk about the Creepy Hollows. I've gotten a lot of positive feedback about, the event was a little smaller in the gym, but the train was a hit, along with the pumpkins and how large and perfect they were for carving. And also attended the Adams Fourteen Facility Naming Committee a couple of times in the last month, so that's my report.
Okay, Mr. Teter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I did attend the AdCOG Dinner in Bennett on your behalf, and it was a nice presentation out there. I'd like to thank Public Works' Maria and her people for, I did make a point to go to the last, the landfill thing we had for the Commerce City residents and the vegetation thing at the Mile High Grand Park where this- thing at the Mile High Greyhound Park where this year was held for the vegetation and the leaves and stuff last Saturday. I don't know, there was a long line when I was there, so I know there was a lot of tenants to that place yesterday, and it looked like it was well-received and well-run. And that's it, thank you.
I'm glad you brought that up, because I did a ton of yard work over the last four days prior to Saturday, and I sent my son with a truckload of limbs and leaves and everything else. So it'll be interesting to see how much we actually received this year for yard waste, but a great opportunity and program for people to do that winter cleanup of their property. Mr. Bullock?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Besides the events that you named off, I worked the Creepy Hollows in the evening for the teenagers, and it was really interesting to actually, I had a, it was a bowling ball thing where you roll it up and it tries to stop in the middle, and it is surprising how many teenagers, after they figured out what they, how it worked, it became their life's work to make that thing work, and it was actually fun to me because you could tell when they were starting that they weren't going to make it, and then the ones that really got good at it, they just kept coming back and back and then showing their friends they could do it. Also Catalyst for Change was an event I went to out at, it's called Catalyst for Change, and it's from the cradle to career success, where they, through its Adams County Youth Initiative, that they have a program out at Chancio's Restaurant, and had all the different schools that it's worked to succeed in Adams County. On that Saturday of Creepy Hollows, Twenty-seven J Prairie View also had their Halloween Street out at Prairie View High School, which was, it was, I can call it a success, because there was, I've never seen that many kids out there when they weren't going to school, but candy was involved, so I had a hunch that had a lot to do with it. Trunk or Treat out at the reunion parking lot, rec center parking lot. Next year, I'm going to suggest, I was a judge for Trunk or Treat. Next year, I suggest that we all be judges. You would not, you will not believe how these people can design a trunk of a car and make it look like something scary, you know, and there had to be three, four thousand kids out there getting candy and walking through that parking lot. I was amazed. It was absolutely one of the things that, and seeing how I was the only judge who ever won, they can either thank me or blame me. During that same time, the Colorado Transportation Matters Summit was on November first down at the Grand Hyatt downtown, and it was the most interesting, you've seen it on the news over the last week where they're talking about all the intelligent cars and intelligent roads, where cars actually communicate with the roads, and then they communicate with other cars so they can tell where there's slowdowns and everything. Well, this is no longer a concept, it's actually coming into fruition. So it's happening now, and I expect that in our state, within the next five years, all of our roads will be intelligent roads, and all the cars that are new will be intelligent cars that communicate with each other, so it should alleviate a lot of traffic jams. That's it.
That's it? We'll go to Councilwoman Carson.
Oh, it's been like two weeks, but Cultural Council had its retreat, and it's always such a fun, engaging day. But I, am I on? I guess I am. I did want to thank Michelle Halsted for coming and facilitating, and then I wanted to welcome all of the new youth commissioners. Thursday night is when they were all there, and we got to meet them. They're going to be having the Adams County Youth Initiative come, and that will help them make their decision in what their signature project will be this year. But a big thank you to Daniella, because both of these have been under her charge now. And I'm assuming that the Cultural Council Retreat was a little overwhelming, but hang in there, Daniella, you'll get it. And once again, it's back to what I said about we cannot be a successful city without all these volunteers who belong to all of us. So thanks to everybody, and tomorrow's election day. Everybody go vote.
Vote and vote often. But it's important that you vote at least once.
And good luck to the mayor.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Douglas?
Yes, I just wanted to add that I had put out for the Trunk or Treat on October twenty-eighth at the reunion. I had a prior engagement and went over to the senior night for the Prairie View High School Boys Football Game, and so I appreciate Renee filling in that spot. I did sign up to judge and had a conflict, and yes, I had some of my family members attend that, and there's thousands of kids that showed up, so a lot of people turned away because it was really packed over there. Back on October twenty-sixth, before our telephone town hall meeting, I went over to Amsean High School and helped set up for the Eagle Street. They had a Trunk or Treat there, actually, the kids, there was about over two thousand kids that showed up, and fire department was there, and they had to kind of close things off because the hallways there were just packed with kids, and they had a great time. They had music, they had spaghetti dinner. October twenty-seventh, attended the A-List Dinner. Lindsey Vonn was the guest speaker, and it was pretty funny listening to her, because she, you know, there's a lot of politicians there, and there's no way in her mind, she's nothing but an athlete, and that was on her mind, her accomplishments and all that, and her struggles and all, and it was really neat to hear her story. November first, I also attended the Transportation Matter, and actually Panasonic, that's right off of Sixty-first and Penya, is teaming up with CDOT. They're going to do a study in the corridor to help find ways to move the traffic along better. And like what Renee was saying, we're talking about the vehicle, transmission vehicle to pedestrians, not only smart cities, but smart, I've been talking about this before, smart intersections and all that. They're also talking about when they, later on here, next ten years or so, to get cars moving equally, they're talking about polluting, where the cars are all wired and talking to each other, where they're actually, the speed of the cars, it's almost like NASCAR where you have a pace car, except all the cars are all tied together, going down intersection at a certain speed, so you can get a platoon of cars to go through the intersection and not just a few. Also looked at, I don't know if you guys saw that demonstration of Otis, where they had the rig that was taking Budweiser beer from their plant all the way down Carlisle Springs. They also showcased that rig, that truck out there at this Transportation Matter, and then they showed a video, and actually, the guy going from the front seat to the back, and the whole time, he was in the back. They had state troopers in the front and back to just to make sure in case things didn't go right, but it made it from there to Carlisle Springs. And so this technology is coming about, and Otis actually, Uber took over that contract, so they're responsible for making that happen. But there were several breakout sessions, and it was a fun-filled day of just listening to all the technology that's coming our way, and they're actually using, even though we didn't compete for smart cities, Panasonic really wants to be part of Colorado, and I think we should take advantage of that, being that they're just down the street from us, so thank you.
Yep, thank you. All right, that takes care of reports. Now, we have an executive session. I'm open for a motion in a second to enter into that executive session. Mr. Bullock?
Move to, move into executive session sixteen dash forty-one, executive session pursuant to CRS twenty-four dash six, stage four oh two, parentheses four, parentheses A and E, for the purpose of considering a potential lease or transfer of real property at seventy-four fifty East Highway Two for the purpose of determining position relative to negotiations for any such transaction.
All right, I have a motion. Mr. Teeter?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to go into executive session. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried, and we are in executive session, and we will, as soon as the executive session's over, we'll be out to finish out our council meeting and move into the Northern Infrastructure General Improvement District meeting.